Welcome, Mr. Dreyfus. Thank you so much for joining us and for your quest to serve in this new role. Mr. Dreyfus, as you know, we have sent you some questions in advance. I'll be asking you those nine questions and then turn it over to my colleagues, which may have some follow-up questions or some additional questions of their own. And so, in the interest of time being that we apologize for running a bit late, I'm going to go ahead and get started with our first question. And that is, why do you want to be Chair of the Planning Board? And what in your background qualifies you for this role?
I guess my career has been in management. I am a pragmatic leader that has accomplished a lot in my real estate career. I've practiced before the agency as an applicant on many occasions and served, you know, as a board member for over four years. I think I know how to get things done. I think I know how to delegate responsibility and authority to the people who have that role in the agency and let them do their jobs. I believe the agency needs to be goal-oriented. It should have an objective when it gets started, and then everybody should be working towards that goal. And I also believe that I have witnessed, I guess firsthand, the lack of cooperation between the various government agencies that deal with or through the planning board. And I think I would be very objective in trying to find a way to get all the agencies to work together, to hopefully cooperate in trading certain responsibilities to get the job done more efficiently. I've been doing real estate development for almost 40 years in this county, and I think this is probably the, maybe the fortieth streamlining group that's been put together to try to streamline the process. I think we all have the right goal, but without the right leadership, it's just not going to happen. So, I think I've had experience in doing that, and that's what I hope to impart on the agency.
Now, what do you feel are the most important issues facing the Planning Board? And what do you think would be your top three priorities as Chair?
I think the agency has to be goal-oriented. We have to decide where we're going and then have everybody work together to get there. We have to be relevant, I think, and apply common sense to what we do. It is sometimes distressing to see some position that comes up because of some extraneous issue that really is not towards the main goal, and that takes over the process. And I think sometimes somebody has to just look back and say, where are we trying to get to and how are we going to get there? And if some of those things are problems that are in the way, like there are environmental issues, there are traffic issues, we have to figure out how to solve them. We just can't say no. And so, I think that hopefully will be the goal of the agency. It's not telling people what to do, it's giving them the responsibility of solving those problems. I know when I ran my business, when employee came in or Vice President came in and said, "I have this problem," I always asked them, "Don't come in with a problem without a solution." So, that's hopefully the kind of management I would impart on the important and key people at the planning agency and the Parks Department.
What is your understanding of the role of Chair as it relates to the other members of the Board and also to the County Council?
Well, with regard to the Board, you know, we're all equal, we all have equal votes. I think what's important to the Board is to get a fair representation or presentation from our staff, to make sure we have an open mind listening to the community and the landowner or developer presenting their positions, and then lead the conversation to a solution that would be a consensus. That's how I see the Board responsibility. It's not taking a position and hammering it through and trying to get everybody to agree with you, but making sure that the staff presents an unbiased, full presentation of the facts so that they can make a judgment. With regard to the Council, I've quite frankly never worked directly with the Council as a Planning Board member, except as requested by the Chair or my colleagues on a particular issue. You know, the way I see it, you're my boss. It must be, I'm not quite sure how it works when you have a President, nine individual members, and each one may have a different agenda. I don't know how I'd handle that balancing act.
I'm trying to figure that out myself.
Especially if there are conflicts right on the Council itself. So, I think I'd have to be very, deal with that very gingerly, to make sure I'm listening and make sure I'm responding, but not take a position that's contrary to the Council's majority. So, I kind of see that as the role. I know there are a number of meetings that are held with individual Council members, and I would expect to be able to do that as well.
How do you think we should deal with future development and redevelopment issues? And what is the Planning Board's role in supporting existing communities as well?
You know, that's a hard question to answer in a general kind of way. Each case presents its own issues. A new school is being built, a school is being expanded. It affects the environment in which the existing residents have to face. It also affects the new residents who have young kids who need that school. And we hear constantly the conflict between the changes that will take place for the existing neighborhood and for those newcomers that expect not to have their children be in classrooms that are trailers. So, you know, each case is different. I think it's important for us to recognize how important the school system is and how important it is to get those children out of temporary classrooms and into a school. And we have to do a balancing act every time we do it. So, that's kind of how I see the role with that agency. It depends, you know, one of the things that has been difficult and created difficulty is we do a major master plan that covers an entire large area, and in reality, 90% of that area is really not going to change. It's only a certain portion of that area that has the pressure of either new development or change. And yet, we have to drag the entire neighborhood in and worry about what happens in their neighborhood when, in reality, the end result of that plan is that the residential neighborhood is not going to change. It's the fringes that abut the new development, and it's the new development itself. And the concept of more restricted master plan area, I think, would make us more nimble in dealing with changes that we have to do more than once every 20 years. And relieve neighborhoods of potential impacts that, in reality, will not happen. Master plans now take two to three years, and it's, by then, we'll be in another change in the economy and we'll miss an opportunity. So, I think we can help neighborhoods by dealing with the areas that abut them and how that can be dealt with in a fair way, and then deal with those areas that potentially can change.
As you know, many of the Council's land use decisions require balancing the community's desires for further economic development, neighborhood protection, enhanced environmental protection as well. What are some of the factors you would look at when trying to make those decisions to achieve a reasonable balance in those instances?
I believe very strongly in the master plan process. The master plan process takes into consideration the community's views, the landowner or developer's views, and our staff's views. And in the end result is a recommendation from our Planning Board to this Council. And the Council finally makes a decision on what the right approach should be. That should be our guideline. That should be what our job should be, is to make sure that that plan, which everybody has signed off on, maybe not everybody's 100% happy about, but that's the plan. And that's the plan that exists for 20 years. And we should work together with all the other governmental agencies to get that plan implemented. It is frustrating to me to see a plan that's adopted in 1994, and here we are in 2014, doing a plan again, and nothing has changed, nothing. That is very troubling, because we've all signed off on what we want to have happen, and yet it hadn't happened. So, I think from our standpoint, we have to be practical and pragmatic and understand what is feasible and how to get there.
Let me ask you, what's your view of the Planning Board's overall responsibility for our park system? And what do you see as the Chair's role when it comes to our parks?
You know, I think my primary role is to support the Parks Director. The new director, I have a great deal of confidence in. Our Board just appointed Mike Riley as Director. He knows the park system. Over the years that I've served on the Planning Board, I've been very impressed with the management team of the Parks Department. I think they have a plan on how to go forward, and I have to make sure we can support that plan and make sure it's implemented. I think there has to be a recognition of the changing, well, sort of the diversity that we're facing in our county, not just in diversity of employment that we have at the Parks Department or other departments, but it's as well the changing nature of our residency. And neighborhoods deserve to have a park and a park facility that's in keeping with what their makeup is. Neighborhoods that have been developed in the 60s and 70s are now turning over. Empty nesters are moving on or about to move on, and young families are coming back in. And we have to recognize that those neighborhoods may not have what we need in park facilities. I also believe strongly in activating our parks. I think that parks that don't encourage use and reflect what the community needs in that neighborhood are not serving as good, as strong a purpose as we should be. And I would encourage the Parks Department to do that. But my role as the Chair is not to run the agency. I don't run the Parks Department, I don't run the Planning Department. What I do is make sure we have good leadership there and let those leaders run the agency, give them support, give them the authority to do their job, and help them when they have a particular problem that they need advice on.
Bless you. Thank you. Let's see here. As you know, this position carries with it obligations for attending meetings, making appearances, and other activities that will include nights and weekends and the like. And will you be able to make the time commitments required to fulfill the elements of this role? And have you engaged in these types of community outreach activities? And if so, give me some examples of that.
Well, I recognize that taking on this job, if I'm fortunate enough to get it, is one that takes that responsibility along with it. There are so many functions, I'm not sure I could attend all of them, but I'm sure that my colleagues on the Planning Board can attend some, and the Parks Director and the Planning Director can attend some. I've been to a number of events with Françoise and independently that we've had, and I'll do my best to attend them. I recognize it's kind of a seven-day-a-week job. A lot of the events occur on the weekend, but I knew that when I applied. As far as the need to invest the time, I think that comes with the position.
All right. And, Mr. Dreyfus, instead of the standard number eight about potential conflicts of interest, I'm going to go to one that we also gave you in advance that's a little bit more specific, based on some of the information that you provided. You told us that you were employed by a real estate development company, IDI Group Company, and that IDI owns development property in Montgomery County that has occasionally come before the Planning Board for review or development. If you are appointed Chair, do you plan to maintain your employment with IDI? And if so, how do you propose to avoid a conflict of interest or an appearance of a conflict between your position as Chair and your employment with IDI if IDI ends up developing property in Montgomery County?
My role with IDI really has been very limited for the last five years. We do still own a shopping center at Leisure World Plaza on Georgia Avenue, and I have been involved in hiring a management company to run that and making some business decisions related to it. We had one site plan amendment that went through the Planning Board. I did not participate either in the meetings or in any discussions with staff on that application. With regard to the rest of our developments that are all in Northern Virginia, we don't have anything in Montgomery County other than that one shopping center. Our development at Leisure World is totally over, and I would recuse myself and stay out of any involvement in the shopping center. I am in part owner of the shopping center, but I would delegate all of that to some other employee of the company. The company principal, Giuseppe Cechi, has three sons in the business. I've spent a role of mentoring them to try to prepare them and have them work on running the business. I have not taken a management role in that. I do serve as a President of an association in Virginia, a homeowner association that has requested me to stay. I'll be done with that in the next couple of months, so I don't expect that that will be a problem in the future. Any new development in Montgomery County, if the company chooses to do so, I would not be involved in any way either as an owner, investor, or operating head. I am not an owner in the company, so except for the projects I'm an owner in, I am not involved in any way. I forgot to answer the second part of your previous question about meetings and town involvement. When we started in Leisure World in 1983, we had to do a number of changes to the PRC zone. There were 3,000 units and about 5,000 residents in Leisure World at that time. And I held meetings with all of the communities, the community at large, and town meetings, and then brought a consensus development plan to the Planning Board and the Council to make some amendments to the PRC zone. I've done similar things in the years that have transpired when we made some other changes to the text to accommodate some development plans that were at Leisure World. In every case, they were 100% supported by the community and its leadership. At one time, we looked at a property in Montgomery Village, maybe seven or eight years ago. I met with the leaders of Montgomery Village and had a town meeting with all of them before we proceeded. I determined that the community was not supportive of the plans we had, and I dropped the deal. I don't believe it's good sense to fight a community about an issue that needs community support and involvement. So, I've had lots of meetings in my career. At least, our company believes in not sort of setting condominium associations adrift, but participating and getting them up to speed on what it takes to run a building. And I've served either as President or Vice President of 17 associations at Leisure World alone, plus all those and other communities, for at least three-year period until I got off. And I believe that it was very important to stay in direct communication with my residents to make sure that we did what we're supposed to do as a developer. So, I'm used to night meetings and homeowner meetings and community meetings.
All right. And then, last question. Are there other points about your interest in the Chair that you'd like to call to the Council's attention?
You know, during my tenure on the Planning Board, we've approved at least eight to 10 major master plans and over 30 other countywide plans that affect either transportation or roads. And I believe that the vision that I have is to have those plans implemented. I believe that there's plenty of vision in this Council, the executive, and our planning staff to come up with the ideas that it takes to move this county forward, and I believe my role can be to implement those plans. That's the part of the Planning Chair's job that I think is very important at this stage in our development history, and that's, I think, the leadership that I can bring. In working with the Executive's Office on the office building that we're building in Wheaton, it would be a tragedy if we built the building and had three separate departments operating independently and not cooperating to achieve the goal that the Council had in putting us all in one place. And I believe that's a real danger if we don't have somebody who can say, "You know, it makes more sense to move this from here to there, and then you can do this and they can do that," because I think that's the way we can move ahead and really streamline the system. Not change any of the laws, not change any of the regulations that we have to abide by, but to make it more efficient. So, that's really what I think I can bring to the process.
Well, thank you very much. That concludes the predetermined questions, and I'll turn it over to Councilmember Leventhal for the first Council question.
Mr. Dreyfus, thank you so much. We're very fortunate to have you serving on the Board, and we're grateful for your expression of interest in chairing it. Do you support the preferred local alternative for the Purple Line, including the use of the Georgetown branch right-of-way?
Yes.
How can, how should the county maintain our agricultural reserve? And what do you see as the Planning Board's role in that respect?
Well, I think we have significant laws in place and regulations to deal with the agri-reserve. I believe it's currently well-protected. We've, you know, I'm a big supporter of the agri-reserve, a frequent user of farm ponds up in Poolsville to do a lot of fishing. I take the ferry on a regular basis to go to our project in Leesburg. I travel through that area at least once a week. I think it's beautifully done and well-maintained. Not everybody's a farmer. Some tracts are just large, open rural space that people enjoy. It's a choice that our residents make. There are problems that go with it as far as transportation, but that's what I think is so great about our county. We offer a little bit for everybody. And so, I think that the rules and regulations we have have been adequate. We've made some tweaks to them, but I don't see any need for major adjustment in what we've been doing. We've been pushing for clustering development so that we can preserve as much open space as possible for real farming. And certain projects have come through where our staff has encouraged the developers, and they have done so, to group their developments in areas that are not particularly good for the farming side and leave as much farming land as possible. And I think we've been supportive of that and have encouraged our staff to do so, and they've been successful.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Leventhal, Councilmember Andrews.
Mr. Dreyfus, thank you for your service on the Planning Board, and thank you for applying to be the Chair of the Planning Board. I'm asking these questions of all of the candidates. The first one is, what is the most valid criticism that you've heard of the Planning Board, and how would you address it if you were Chairman?
I would say the most valid criticism is relevancy and use of common sense. I see some decisions that come out, either from the staff, supported often by my colleagues that, to me, make no sense. I've been trying to be persuasive in why it isn't an action we should take. Many of those have come to the Council. There have been votes, nine-nothing, in favor of a different position than the Board has raised or our staff has raised, and I think that's somewhat embarrassing.
Can you give me an example?
First one was Glenstone. The choice was a six-acre septic field or a totally paid-for sewer connection that could be made environmentally sensitive. And it was not an option of whether the owner was going to build what he was going to build because it was permitted. So, to deny the sewer extension was to endorse a six-acre septic field, which, to me, made no sense. Plus, it's the only museum in this county, and if some person wants to invest the kind of money he has invested to create a museum like that, I think we should do everything we can to encourage him. The second one that was very troublesome to me was the Wheaton Rec Center. That rec center, I knew couldn't live on the same site as the new facility. I tried to convince my colleagues and the staff that that was not practical, and I was not successful. I don't know what the final vote was here, but I know that it was not historic, made historic. And historic is a balance between the need to make something historic and put those restrictions on it, and the balance in what the community needed. And I felt, in that particular case, the community facility really prevailed. And I was very kind of embarrassed and disappointed that we didn't reach a different conclusion. Those are the two immediate ones that come to mind and have been somewhat frustrating.
All right. Thank you. What do you think would be a reasonable starting salary for the new Planning Board Chair? And how would you suggest, what factors do you think the Council should take into account in setting the salary?
I mean, I know what the current salary is because it's been advertised. I don't really have a problem with it. I haven't thought about the salary. I'm not in it for the salary. And I think it's unusual for someone who's done what I've done in the private sector to be even willing to do this kind of thing in the government arena. It's not an easy place to work. So, I think the salary, to me, seems reasonable enough.
Okay. Thank you.
That may screw things up for some of my fellow members who want the job, but...
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Andrews, Councilmember Alverich.
First question. If we were to get a master plan and we knew the Planning Board had changed what the staff had recommended, would you have problems with our being able to ask staff the basis of the recommendations to the Planning Board and what their thinking was behind those recommendations?
You know, I do believe in the chain of command. I think there's an appropriate way to deal with people in that chain that doesn't subject them to interrogation on things that they shouldn't be dealing with. But I do also believe that there has to be a total freedom of information that comes from both the staff and the Board's logic so that the Council can make a decision with full evidence. I don't, I am not afraid at all of the Council hearing what the staff's position is. It's just a matter of how do you do that? That doesn't mean there's going to be a phone call to some staff person who had a different point of view. It's very difficult for them to respond that way, as it is in any organization. As a Board member, and I think as a Council member, you have to get everything that's out there so you can make an intelligent decision. The staff position and the Board position should not be tainted in a way that you're getting a flavor rather than the full picture. I'd like to hear from our staff, "Yes, we like this project here, but here's an environmental problem, and here's potential solutions." The solutions will not solve everything 100%, but we think this will ameliorate the problem." And then, the Board can really make an honest decision about, how important is that? Should that change the overall project? Should it, or should it be a balancing act that the project is more important than that one issue, and we've done all we can? So, you know, it's hard to say, but I think that would be difficult.
So, that's a segue into, I guess, my second question, which was, you had made a comment about the role of the Board is to say yes, not no. And I guess, and you phrased it in terms of either congestion issues or environmental issues. I think we all know that not every congestion or environmental issue can be fixed. So, A, is reducing the size of a project part of a solution? And who pays for the solutions, whether it requires extensive transportation improvements or requires extensive environmental fixes? Is a project that engenders those things responsible for the costs? Or who do you see paying for it?
That's hard to answer on a sort of a generalized basis. I think you have to look at project by project. But, you know, there's got to be a balance act between what does that job, that project create in the way of jobs? What's the impact on transportation? What's the impact on environment? And all these projects that we view have those kind of implications. You know, I know the question hasn't come up, but I view White Oak as kind of an area like that. Here we have, you know, 10,000 employees from a government agency that we've encouraged to occupy the former naval weapons site, and we don't have any housing nearby. We haven't improved any of the infrastructure significantly. We haven't... housing nearby. We haven't improved any of the infrastructure significantly. We haven't provided places for those people to go to lunch, to shop in their neighborhood. And I think that, you know, that's, to me, bad planning. If we invited them to come, we'd better have a way for them to live in that environment. So, you know, and again, that's a balancing act. If we thought that transportation and those other issues were going to be an impediment to employment in that particular location, we shouldn't have encouraged them to occupy the site, especially since there's no tax dollars coming to the state. You know, we encourage, people come from Prince George's County and Howard County, drive on the roads that go through our county. We won't allow any development on it, and then they work at NIH, I mean at FDA. To me, that's just not good planning, and I think we can't ignore that issue. Those people, those 10,000 people are going to be there, whether we like it or not at this stage. And so we have to, everything's a balance act, to me. We may make a balanced judgment at the planning board, or the staff may, and you may make it a different one. But I think you have to get all the information, why the staff recommended what it did, why we recommended what we did. And then, you know, you have the toughest job, because we just give you advice. We don't make the final decisions in many cases.
Could I ask you an affordable housing question? We have a shortage now. If you look at the projected growth of the county and some, and the income levels that are associated with a large portion of that growth, we're likely to have a very large shortage added to it going forward. We have naturally occurring affordable housing in the community. So how do you balance, I mean, you, if anybody knows what it costs to build things. So how do you balance the preservation of naturally occurring affordable housing? And if you don't preserve it, what's the economic potential for replacing it as it exists?
Well, I guess I've been co-chair of the Affordable Housing Conference for about 15 years now with Barbara Goldman Goldberg, and it's an annual problem that we face it. It's very difficult to, I mean, you have to recognize that existing naturally occurring affordable housing is affordable because its age, its condition, its lack of air conditioning, its, and the amenities that come with it. And so if we want people who live in those facilities to have a better environment, we have to figure out either how to encourage the redevelopment of that, to provide sufficient affordable housing, or to take those facilities and recondition them. We've done that, the housing office has done that with a number of projects by encouraging the current owners to work with them to create the affordable house. It's much easier creating or improving a project, a property, than it is to knock it down and start all over again. So our housing office has done that in Bethesda and some other places. We have to do, take a more active role, I think.
So, what do you think of the existing CR point system, how it supplies, and is there room for improvement?
Do I wear my developers hat or my planning board hat?
Wear your good-to-the-county hat.
Well, it's, you know, the goal, the goal is to try to create a project that is an enhancement to the county and the public in total. The point system was designed to encourage that development and get the kinds of things we need. Once the system is implemented, sometimes it didn't work out. You know, maybe a bike rack isn't worth how many points it's worth. And you can do a lot of bike racks and a lot of trees on the street that generate a lot of points, but don't necessarily get us where we want to go. So I think it's the constant reevaluation of that system and how it's actually working is very important. I have had an idea about the BLT issue for some time, about whether, what priority that, and it's a significant amount of money that a developer has to pay to get those BLTs so that it can move ahead in the CR zone. Maybe some of that should, some of that money should go to affordable housing. It should go to the Housing Initiative Fund. If you're developing in an urban area, is eliminating the last developed lot in the ag reserve more important than affordable housing? Maybe we should split it. Maybe we should find some other formula. Because the developer's already agreed that he's got to spend that money. It's just dollars. They don't, they don't particularly care, when they write the check for $250,000, whether it goes to the last BLT, or half of it goes to affordable housing, or they're, or they're using that money in a different way. And in looking at the process, I started to think about, how do we get more money into affordable housing, which is really what affordable housing is all about.
So my last question is, you talked about an interest in reorganizing things. And I'm intrigued, because I think there's a whole bunch of people who are interested in how you might reorganize. Do you have any, like, I know you've thought about, is there, are there things you'd actually think we could do, or do you prefer?
Well, I, you know, as a board member, I don't think I've had a meeting with staff, any staff member, except two or three times in my whole four-year term, because I don't think that's my job. My job as a board member is policy. So I don't get down in the weeds as to how they perform their job. But I do, I've had some experience in the negotiation with the county on the office building. I've seen, the county has an arborist, we have forest preservation. We get a letter from the arborist about the importance of certain trees. Seems like those things are in different places. They should maybe be in one place. The, right now, the process for inspections, we implement the forest conservation law. The forest conservation law requires an inspection before the builder can go to one step or another. Maybe DPS or DEP that already does inspections on the next morning should take on the inspection. And we do the, if we all follow the same law and we set the rules, then they have to follow the rules. It would might, it wouldn't, it wouldn't necessarily change how things are being done, but would move things between departments. I think when we get in this building together, the council's goal was to try to figure out a way that somebody could walk in and go to one place and get everything, you know, pretty much done, and they don't have to jump from one place to another on the same subject. And I would work with those department heads, and I don't have a pride of saying, this is ours, and we don't want to give it up, and this is theirs, and they've always done it. I think we just have to practically look at, what does everybody do, and where should that function be?
I appreciate that comment. I mean, I think that's one of the big things that we're going to have to tackle. I don't think putting everybody in the same building is going to change either practice or the way that things are laid out right now. So you have to, actually have to do something. But thank you.
Councilmember Branson.
Thank you. I'm going to ask you, Mr. Dreyfus, a question I've been asking everyone, which is this. The last few planning board chairs, I think the last two or three, have all been one-termers, even though there's a possibility of two terms. And yet, they have declined, I guess. So, so my question to you is, why do you think that's so? What do you think the cause of it is? And whatever your answer to that is, how would you fix it?
Well, you know, I don't have an insight into the cause for people, you know, prior to, I guess Royce Hansen, when I served the last year of his term. And I don't know what motivated him, quite frankly, to not seek another term. But I think he had a very strong vision of what should happen, what decisions you should make as a council, and they weren't happening. And that didn't make him happy. And I don't think he wanted to go through another four years of trying to convince you how wrong you were. As far as Francois is concerned, she, you know, I think has done an outstanding job in getting that zoning rewrite done. We've had 37 meetings just on that subject. We were meeting twice a week. I don't think I would have done it for anybody else but her. She has this, you know, ability to pull all of us together, and in spite of very different views, we all very much respect her and work with her. I think it's, it's a tough job trying to please everybody, and maybe that's what was too much for her. I really don't know. I can't speak for her. You know, my, I have sort of a simple agenda. I should, I just would like the place to work more efficiently. I mean, I would like to get, you know, management philosophy that starts at the top and works all the way down instead of the other way around. Once that's accomplished and set, you know, I don't have a mission to be, to have a fiefdom there for long term. I think, in my whole career, in my two jobs, I've enjoyed every day of what I did. I expect to enjoy what I do at the planning board, and as long as I joy it, enjoy it, I continue it. If it isn't fun anymore and rewarding, then I wouldn't. I have not had this job, so I don't, I don't know how it would work. But I, I think my career has been to get the job done the way you, as a council member, intended it to get done. That, that doesn't mean, and I have this term that I've used so often, that I do exactly what you tell me and don't get the goal in which you directed. I call that malicious obedience. I've had people that worked for me that were like that, and they said, well, you told us to move this to there. And I said, well, I wanted to move it to there so that crane wouldn't hit it, not move it to there and then you realize it's right in the line and not move it out of the way. And I just don't want to operate that way. So I think that, you know, if your goal is to get these agencies to work together and get a more efficient process, not avoiding regulations or laws that you've passed, and this county has, but to make sure people know where they're going and can deal in kind of a logical way, I will have achieved my goal. If I enjoy my job, I'll be there for two terms. If I don't, I'll do my job and move on.
I want to thank you for introducing us to a new term of malicious obedience. You'll be hearing that. You'll be hearing a lot more of that.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Branson, Councilmember Navarro.
I think two-year-olds tend to do that, right? Malicious obedience over and over again, probably.
And some staff members, probably.
I didn't want to go there, but anyway, thank you, Mr. Dreyfus, for your service at the planning board, as well as all the other endeavors that you have done throughout the years. The question that I've been asking everybody has to do with this notion of the county changing, becoming, of course, older. So we have a growing senior population. We are trying to do whatever we can to attract millennials and kind of sell the county to them in many ways. And also, of course, the immigrant population that has been growing since, you know, the 1980s. So as we're talking about all these different things and getting in the weeds about the processes, et cetera, of what land use entails, what would you suggest would be new ways to make sure that all of these folks are aware, participate, become part of the decision-making that then affects their lives? You know, what would be some of the things that you would do if you had this position?
You know, I had been thinking about immigrant population. And in reality, the first wave of development in the suburbs in Montgomery County was really immigrant population, was just different immigrants. And they, to make it exciting for people to move in here with young families and diversify, I think we have to provide the amenities that those people expect in those neighborhoods. We can't leave them 40 years old and expect them to come here and say, oh, this is really where I want to live because Montgomery County has great schools. There has to be more. And I think that the decision the council made on the new facilities for Wheaton, it really makes a lot of sense. We have to do more of that. Make sure we provide Down County parks that provide recreation, activate those parks, make sure that we're investing in the libraries like we are in Silver Spring. And that will attract families with young kids. We should take those schools that are overcrowded Down County and make sure we modernize them and enhance them. And I don't think we have to, you know, put up a sign and say, millennials come here. I think they will come here because we have a great school system and we have an environment in which they live, they can live. A lot of our Down County housing is affordable. It's, there are neighborhoods that have great accessibility, have great amenities nearby, good transportation. And I think if we modernize what we can do as a public, the private sector will come in and redo houses and do other things that will make them more in keeping with the current demands. So I think the market will help solve it if we provide what we can as a government.
Thank you. And I really do appreciate that comment about not having to put a sign that says millennials come here. It reminded me of an article I just read about how, you know, being hip or the hipster sort of movement is dying because the moment that people started talking about, you know, hipsters, hipsters said, we're no longer hip. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, it appears that we have no other lights, so we want to thank you very much, Mr. Dreyfus, not only for your prior service, your current service, but also your quest to serve in this new role. We will be making a decision in relatively one week, and we'll be in contact with you shortly. So thank you very much.
Thank you.